Jacob, are you good?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, it's actually five after five on Monday, April the 19th, and we'll call this regular city council meeting to order. This is being held, of course, in person and also via conference call. So with that, if you would please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Deb.
Jody. Here.
Here.
Mike.
Here.
Rodney.
Here.
Tyler.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum, thank you. Entertained a motion now to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Harley and a second from Don. Any discussion? Vote, please, Deb.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. Across the mayor's desk, I just want to thank Ryan Merrill today for being our videographer. And it's time for citywide cleanup days, and Barb, that's between April, or from April 30th and the first of May. So Barb, would you like to speak more on that, please?
Sure. Spring cleanup days is scheduled for April 30th from eight to three, and May 1st from eight to noon. There will be dumpsters out of Veterans Park for people to bring their things to. The Kiwanis is going to go around on Saturday morning picking up items for the elderly and the disabled, and the Rotary will be out there collecting the fees for us. So a big thank you to the Kiwanis and the Rotary for what they're doing to help the city. The rules, it was in the reminder today, it'll be in the paper next Thursday, and again, in the reminder and next week's paper. So all the rules of what's allowed are listed in the newspaper. Or if you have any questions, you can call City Hall.
Or if you want an item then picked up, call City Hall, make an appointment, or put your name on the list, anyway.
That's correct.
So, okay, very good. Thank you very much. Does council have anything?
I just want to say from the fire department, a big thank you to the community for our pancake breakfast two weekends ago. We had a great turnout, probably one of the best years we've ever had. So a big shout out to the community for stepping out with everything going on and showing support. So, thank you.
Good. It was, it was good, too. Eggs, pancakes, and eggs were good. Anybody else have anything? Okay, hearing done, we'll move to item number six, an update from the city administrator.
I just have one item. It's regarding the announcement of a partnership between the city and AMU. The city, we've had a tree program for the last several years that provides $65 rebate, more or less, to plant a tree in an approved area in the right-of-way location. This year, we partnered with AMU, using AMU as a city as well as grant funds from the American Energy, and we're expanding that program. So it will now be up to $75 for residential properties, up to two trees per year. And that can be planted either in right-of-way in an approved location to make sure that it doesn't interfere with underground utilities, or also the other option would be to actually be planted in private property, which is where AMU comes in to help with utility costs. So we're just starting to give the word out about this program. We have the materials on our website, as well as available here at City Hall, but that's $75. You have to get a per-tree, up to two trees a year per resident. You do have to get a tree permit first to make sure that it's being planted in an appropriate location, as well as, you know, it has to be one of the trees in the approved species list. But we think this will achieve multiple goals of helping to replant some trees, as well as providing, you know, the aesthetics and utility benefit in partnership with AMU.
Okay. Good program. So, thank you. Okay, agenda item number seven, this is the citizens' opportunity to address council with any items that are not on tonight's agenda. Yeah, if you'd like to, Peg, would you like to come up front and identify yourself, please, and speak at the podium, then the public can be able to hear you. So.
Is this home?
Yes. It is, very good.
Good afternoon. My name is Peg Skilling, and my husband and I own lots five and six of block 131, Call's Edition in Elkhorn. Our resident address is 706 North Main Street, and therefore, the upcoming Main Street reconstruction project will impact us, specifically the use of our driveway and access to our property. Please note that running down the center of block 131 is an alley. It is our request that an ingress and egress to the alley on the north side of our property be completely opened for our use during the reconstruction project. Currently, the ingress and egress for this alley, which serves our needs, is through the west end of our property, or the property from Main Street. It is clear, as evidenced by the Elkhorn City Code, that an alley means a public right-of-way other than a street, which affords the secondary means of access to abutting property. The very purpose of the alley north of us is as a secondary means of access to our property, as it is now being denied because the road construction on the west end of the alley, Main Street, will prohibit entrance there. But more importantly, because on the east end of that alley, there is a curb blocking entrance to the alley from Johnson Street on the east end. We argue that because of that curb, we will no longer have full access to the alley. The laws of our city and the state make it abundantly clear that streets, sidewalks, alleys, bridges, culverts, overpasses, underpasses, grade crossing separations, and approaches, publicway squares, and commons will be open, in repair, and free from nuisance. According to the Iowa Code, 657.2 subsection five, the definition of a nuisance, the obstructing or encumbering by fences, buildings, or otherwise of public roads, private ways, streets, alleys, common, landy places, or barren grounds. In our situation, the nuisance is the curb on the east end of the alley, as it obstructs and encumbers our use of the alleyway. This curb was not there when block 191 was platted by our abstract in 1871, and the alley was a throughway. Since that time, the curb was put in without consideration for an access at the east end of the alley. It is also questioned whether or not there was maybe due process for notice and an opportunity to be heard by local property owners when the curb was put in. Additionally, two longstanding garages have been built with entrances facing north toward the alley, those garages being situated nearly an equal distance from both the west and the east ends of the alley. Road construction during the Main Street project on the west end and the curb on the east end do not allow us access to the alley to reach our garage, a denial of secondary access. Although we have had numerous conversations with Jacob, Barb, and city attorney Paul Duster, through meetings, emails, phone calls, we have yet to receive a viable reason for the city's position regarding denying our requests to those individuals for a curb cutaway or a temporary buildup on Johnson Street of either blacktop or dirt to be placed in the street to allow easy access over the curb for access to the alley during the Main Street project. Instead, what we have heard is, "Well, it isn't an alley. We don't maintain it." Well, I guess it is an alley. No, we aren't going to do that. No one else has an alley access, so why should you? We're not lacking blocking your alley access, only vehicular access. Contact Duane and Sandy Hicks to see if you can drive through their property from Commercial Street or park in the street like everyone else. And finally, we have never maintained this alley, and we don't intend to begin doing it now. These arguments fall flat when they are compared to the laws of our state and our city. Again, none of these excuses meet with either the Iowa Code for cities nor the Elkhorn City ordinance regarding alleys. It came as a surprise to us that an over-the-curb access, exactly like we have requested, has been built just three blocks from our home on East Call Street. It allows construction traffic to easily drive over the curb there. Additionally, any use of the Hicks property, as was suggested by the city, requires us to pass through private property. We are not comfortable passing through someone's private property. Moreover, in doing that, we would also cross two businesses that are on that property. Both businesses have equipment and vehicles and various other things for their business portioned the area. There is also insufficient lighting. Does the city assume liability for any incidents that might occur by advocating our use of that property? It has also been suggested that we use Oak Street for parking. Street parking for us is questionable, as Oak Street on the south side of our home has rural mail delivery. There are four mailboxes in that block, along with four driveways to homes, leaving very little parking for vehicles in the street. Both Barb Smith and Jacob Jayden are aware of the problem with the mailboxes, as it was discussed following an open meeting. In closing, I inform the council that my husband does have congested heart failure. He has a handicap parking permit, and parking at any distance from our home hampers his breathing if he has to walk very far. Since we have reached an impasse talking to the above-named city officials, we now request that you, as the city council, direct that alley be made accessible to us on the east end at Johnson Street, either by curb cutout or by a temporary curb driveover. Temporary situation, only needed during the Main Street project. An additional request that I would make is, if you choose to deny that access to be made, could we please have a reason that is based on the ordinances of our city and the laws of the state? Thank you.
Thank you, Peg.
Thank you, Peg.
Anyone else would like to address the council? Okay, hearing done, we'll move then to agenda item number eight, which is the consent agenda, and that includes approving the minutes from the April 5th council meeting, approving the bills to be paid this cycle, accept the department reports, as well as the minutes from the various boards and commissions that have met, and accept the administrator's report.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Vote, please, Deb.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. We'll move into a public hearing, and it is 5:19. And a public hearing, agenda item number nine. This is public hearing on proposed plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of costs for the airport two-stall hangar extension project.
I'm Joe Roenfeld, 16 East Main Street, Marshalltown, Iowa. I'm before you today because you have the public hearing on this. We put together plans and specifications for the final extension of the key hangar that you guys have been working on for many years out at the airport. This would be, as you can see up there from the exhibit, this would create a second, smaller hangar as part of this, and then a larger hangar at the end, which is actually meant for a little, a larger aircraft, very similar to what is out there now on the existing workbench. And you guys have done this in multiple phases over multiple years, and this is the last part of it. As far as cost go, the engineer's estimate on the base bid is $390,300. And I'll just read the base plus all alternates, is $447,700. And with that, I entertain any questions?
Any questions from the council? Okay, thank you, Joe. And Jacob, has there been any other public communication or anything?
We have not received any current comments.
Okay. Okay, it's 5:21 then, and we'll close the public hearing on agenda item number nine. And again, it's 5:21, so we'll open the public hearing on agenda item number 10, and that's proposed plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate for Moore Street Snap-on Drive and the utility improvements in the industrial park.
As a mayor mentioned, this is a public hearing on that bid packet, which more or less consists of three projects, the reconstruction of Moore Street, the two blocks there, construction of Snap-on Drive from Poplin Street to Highway 18, and then the initial development of the key industrial park extending utilities, as well as the development of the two stormwater retention facilities, as well as some grading and erosion control measures, preparation of that park being developed. The total estimated cost of the project is $3,076,668.28. You can see a breakdown there. This includes the city, as well as proportionate recovery by AMU. But for Snap-on Drive, the estimated cost is $1,752,281. That initial development of the key industrial park is $596,370. And then the total estimated cost for the Moore Street reconstruction project is $728,016. The city, we have not received any comments regarding this, given notification published.
Okay. And there's no one on the phone, Barb, or?
Oh, there's people there, but they're not attempting to speak.
Okay.
Okay, I should probably comment here. I had sent that email out to everybody, just reminding us that we have that complete street concepts that we had agreed to several years back. I forget just what year that was, but it basically means that instead of just curb to curb, we actually look more sidewalk to sidewalk, so we're considering all traffic, from pedestrians to bicycles to scooters to cars and trucks, and aiming to do our construction so it takes all those into account. You had mentioned on Moore Street that we will be taking up three of the four sidewalks and redoing those, so that's well taken care of. And out in the industrial park, your response there made a lot of sense to me that at this point, we probably need to continue with what we're doing now and to come up with some good conceptual plans for the future and how we will handle sidewalks or bike trails or whatever in that area. Being it's an industrial park, it might be a little different than we would around other parts of town. But I think we do need to keep this in mind whenever we're working on streets and build that into the plan. I guess even the thought that, I mean, I know people who work at Snap-on who walk or bike to work, so, you know, it's not like, just because it's an industrial area, there's no need.
We did go back and look at our empty streets policy, which was adopted in 2013, and going through the criteria for consideration on what's expected and then exceptions to that. There is language in there that there are going to be any exceptions, that those should be, you know, approved by the Streets and Super Committee and then by the council, but not undertaking some of those complete street elements, which I will admit that that process was not followed. And we looked at this in terms of, you know, the industrial park and what we're looking at for heavy traffic. There's no sidewalk connections out there right now or any plans for, as well as trails, so maybe just focus on the road. That being said, you know, the council would want to have those items considered. I'd say the best course of action would be continue with the bid as is. Once we get the lowest bid, between now and then, kind of figure out what we want those items to be, work with the design team, and then, you know, negotiate with the awarded contractor at that point about adding the project in, or, you know, it's always more efficient to do things a lot at once. The other thing we could look at is, you know, continuing as is, and then we would go to, you know, further develop and out there the industrial park. At that point, look at adding sidewalk trails. We do have 20-foot rightaways on either side of the streets, and for all the future streets, we have that as well, just so we have more than enough room to manage the utilities. But, you know, there'll still be, you know, a couple of phases of development out there, so, you know, like I said, that's a little, so those options to incorporate those either in this or future projects, but continuing to move forward with our bid time on.
Yeah, I should apologize. I should have brought this up much sooner, because with new staff members and new people on the council, I'm sure it surprised a lot of people, so I should have thought of it and brought it up when we were first looking at this. But now, it's, I think, still a good time to be planning on it. And as we know from the first trail out there on the east side, it's sure a lot easier to plan something like that before everybody starts building than come in later and try and fit something in.
Okay, any other comments for this public hearing? Okay, hearing done, it's 5:29, and we'll close the public hearing then on agenda item number 10. We'll move to old business, agenda item number 11, and that's an appointment for the Planning and Zoning Commission. Jared Weichert's term expired the first of January of this year. So I wondered if the council had any names?
I do not currently.
I do not.
I'm striking out left and right.
Okay, there was one gentleman, Carl Westling, approached me with an interest to fill that position in planning and zoning. So I just wanted to pass that along and...
You have talked to him recently on that?
I have.
Oh.
Like the day before yesterday.
Okay. Well, that's good, because... I had talked to him earlier, but I didn't know if he had changed his mind or not.
Yeah.
So if he's still interested, I would nominate Carl for this position.
Okay. Here, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, vote, please, Deb.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. Thank you, Carl, yes, for stepping up and agreeing to fill that city position. So we'll move then to new business, agenda item number 12. And this is an ordinance change relating to the Little Sprouts Daycare Special Education Use Permit in Parking Spaces.
As we discussed in the work session, staff, we've prepared four different versions of an ordinance, or excuse me, three different versions of an ordinance, of how the parking configuration could be laid out, with the board of adjustments approval, the Little Sprouts Daycare Special Permit, on the condition that the city designate for adjacent spots of loading and unloading. Option A, well, first, all three versions of the resolution take the, these four angled spots on Call Street and designate those as two-hour parking. Currently, the other three sections of long-street parking on this block of Call Street are already two-hour parking. This is the only stretch that is not, so for consistency, we recommend that, you know, we just designate this entire block as two-hour parking. So that's the first part of the ordinance. And then the second part is where we, there is between the three versions. So option A designates the four angled spots on Call. B is two on Call, two on Dodge, and then option C was four parallel spots on Dodge. We discussed a little bit in the work session, the pros and cons, you know, for consideration. Staff's recommendation is to designate the four on Call, which would be option A, but, like I said, prepare other versions for debate in consideration otherwise. And Jennifer, I believe, is still with us in case the woman has any technical questions for her regarding the different configurations.
Well, I still like the idea of two on the north side and two on the east side, just because it provides alternatives in the way you park and with vehicles being so much different. Some people might prefer one some another. And if those on the angle parking could be spread out a little bit wider, as you mentioned earlier, that would be helpful also.
Is there a handicap spot on the north, on the south side of Call? Didn't Jennifer say that, or not? There's none there, right?
There is not. Little Sprouts is, as part of other regulations through the state, they are planning to construct an ADA compliant parking space on-site.
Okay.
I think I, too, expressed that I like the flexibility that Harley talked about for people just comfort level of whichever they'd like to park, either parallel or, or if they feel comfortable doing that, or if they feel more comfortable, you know? Angled parking.
I think one of the challenges you might have with that is just it'll require additional signage of, you know, no parking between these two signs on Call and these two signs on Dodge, and just getting the communication and people to follow that policy. So if it's separated like that, I think it might be a little clearer. It's just, you know, these are the four spots. You know, it's a little bit easier to understand, it's just, you know, that section.
See your point.
Yeah, I think it'll be easier if we, you know, choose it. You know, I agree with your recommendation for A.
I'd say I like A as well, and like we talked about, this isn't telling parents this is where they have to park. If there's open parking downtown, they can, they can use anything downtown as an unloading zone. That's what those parking spots are for.
that's what those parking spots are for. So we're just setting aside these four spots for that specific use for those time periods where if you're there at any time and one of these spots on Dodge Street's open, by all means, take it. So I think A's the right choice in this situation.
I like that thought about the same, you tried to talk about that.
Yeah.
I like that as well. I think we run into problems when we start looking at the parallel parking, especially all four are parallel parking, just people coming and going and have one spot in the middle and blocking traffic, trying to back in and that stuff out. Option A.
And for all three, the way it's crafted, for the times, it's loading/unloading zone, parking's about 15 minutes from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m., and then from 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. We had talked about times and, you know, kind of what we expect from the daycare and how we sign that. Just using, you know, whole hours just is easier to communicate, you know, the time you could go from 7:00 to 8:00, but then you might get that person who's going to park there at 7:40 because, you know, they've only got 20 minutes, what's the chance of them getting a ticket in 15-minute parking in 20 minutes? Well, then that kind of defeats the purpose, so it provides that buffer, that thing when it is doing that, it's still outside that time. And then on the, for the pickup in the evening, you know, we have in 4:00 to 6:00, you know, Little Sprouts anticipation, they're kind of higher than you from that 4:30 to 5:30. So, you know, I think, you know, once downtown clears out more or less after 5:00, by 30, but it still, you know, kind of provides that buffer just to make sure someone isn't sneaking in and sitting there a little too long, you know, with the time hours being so close. So my initial thought, 7:00, 9:00, and 4:00 to 6:00 kind of seemed long, but, you know, we're talking with Jennifer and more just internally, we discussed it. I think those items actually do make the most sense.
Say, there's no other conversation, I move that we go with Option A and waive the first reading.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes, I can hold on with that.
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you.
Move to approve first reading.
Second. Okay, a motion and a second then to approve the first reading, any discussion? Hearing done, vote please, Deb.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. That first reading then is approved. We'll move to Agenda Item Number 13, this is a resolution involving the airport two-stall hangar project we discussed earlier in the hearing. And Joe is back with us.
Joe Roethfeld again, 16 East Main Street, Marchville, Iowa. You guys had a bid on item earlier talking about this, and we also do have a separate item following this in this regard as well. We did advertise for bids for the project, and we did receive three bids back from contractors. The lowest bidder was Jensen Builders out of Ford Dodge. Thank you. So I don't know, Jacob, if you can zoom in closer there, but as far as the bids go, the base bid, the engineer's estimate was $390,000, and Jensen Builders, their base bid was $482,720. So as far as the alternate bids go, alternate bid one was in the amount, from the engineer's estimate, was in the amount of $32,400, and Jensen Builders was $11,700. Alternate bid two, actually let me go back, alternate bid one was for some insulation, more insulation inside the building to finish out that larger stall that is located on the south side of that building. What it is, is insulation in between the partition walls to make that a finished space. Because right now with the base bid, you would be getting insulation in the roof, in the walls, in the doors, but you would not have it in the partition wall, so the separating wall between the stalls there. So that's alternate one. Alternate two was some additional approach paving out in front of the hangar, essentially straightening the approach for a snow removal perspective, so you could just go down the line of hangers and remove the snow. It did include some storm sewer in there, but the engineer's estimate was $25,000 for that, and Jensen Builders' bid was for $24,300. So prior to the bid, or about the time the bids came out, we did hear some grumbling from contractors about material prices being elevated this year, and the bids are reflective of that, especially in the cost of the steel, other materials for the building. I know contractors were very worried about cost going into this as well. So with some coordination with Barr, Jacob, do you have the summary sheet? Looks like it. There you go. So to kind of summarize everything based on Jensen Builders' bid, I put together the summary sheet for you guys as for consideration. The actual base bid, when you tally everything together, was, with the engineering stuff, was $552,420. I summarized at the bottom with that, it's up there. And it requires a local share of $100,000, $100,420. And alternate bid two, when you take the base, when you put in the alternate bid price, it would require a local share of $112,120. Based on discussion with Barr and Jacob, the initial consideration is for approval of the base bid plus alternate number one for the project.
And to clarify, we talked about local match, that would be above what we had on our agenda.
Correct, yeah, sorry, I said that wrong. So I actually tallied the base plus the alternate, and that amount, the local match, is $363,120. And you are getting, as part of that, you have a share coming from the state for $201,000 that you guys had already received a grant for, by the way, previously. Thank you.
When we kind of talked about the project, what we're looking at, so this is the fourth and final phase of that hangar project. This one too, the other, or three-stall hangers, this one's a two-stall. The idea being you could have a higher, you know, larger and higher classification aircraft, and this kind of being a higher-end hangar for some of those jets that corporations or businesses may have, you know, as part of our combination of different options out there. You know, the price is a lot, you know, in terms of being over, but maybe when you look at the fact that, you know, this is the fourth and final phase, you know, if we can have this, you know, hangar project done, there's no certainty that if we decide to defer this that, you know, we get the DOT funding in the future, you know, who knows what, you know, prices may be a year or two down the road, maybe better, maybe not. And so our recommendation was, you know, to proceed with the project despite being overbid, and with that including bid alternate one, just so it's fully insulated, again, thinking of that being a higher-end aircraft that would be in there that everyone will want, you know, something that can be heated, and you'll be able to lease that hangar for a higher rate as well. And in terms of finances, when we did our 2021A, Barr and Siri, so that included the fire truck, airport hangar, and street projects, it was $7 million and change. So we could, you know, more or less, those three projects can't exceed that amount, so we can use, you know, some of those 2021A funds to make up the, you know, about the $100,000 cost difference between what we had budgeted and what came in for our active expenses.
I think at this point, it's our final phase, we continue moving on with it. As you said, Jacob, side makeup, motion to approve the resolution approving the plan, specifications, and forms of contracts and estimated costs.
I'll second.
I have a motion from Rodney, a second from Jody, is there any further discussion? Hearing done, vote please, Deb.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. Agenda, and thank you, Joe. Agenda Item Number 14 is a resolution awarding the contract for the two-stall hangar extension.
Make a motion, we approve the resolution awarding the contract to Jensen Builders?
Jensen, correct.
Yep.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Rodney, a second from Mike, is there any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Jody?
Yes.
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Motion carried. We'll move to Agenda Item Number 15, and this is a resolution concerning Moore Street, Snap-on Drive, and Key Industrial Park.
So this is a resolution approving the plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimated cost for the Moore Snap-on Drive and Key Industrial Park project, if you had a hearing on earlier.
Okay, I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Harley, a second from Rodney, is there any discussion? Hearing done, vote please, Deb.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. Agenda Item Number 16 is to approve a pay app for the library renovation project.
All right, this is for pay application number four. The library, and the total amount requested is $218,462.93. After this pay application, the balance to finish is $627,458.16. Project architect has reviewed and recommends payments.
Motion to approve the pay application.
Second.
Motion from Rodney, second from Don, to approve this pay application, is there any discussion? Hearing done, vote please, Deb.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. Agenda Item Number 17 is a change order with the library renovation project.
This is a change order of the amount $741.40 to add as a series of window shades that are interconnected in the south classroom, the large picture window there. It was one of those items that when going through preparing the specs, it wasn't included in there because they got bad time, the space wasn't being used as a library, but you know, now obviously it will be a bit, be in the classroom space, so that's when we decided that that wasn't picked up. So we've known for a while it had to be on the change order of this, but just took some time to give the final sourcing on the product that they wanted to use.
Move to approve change order.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second then to approve this change order with the window shade, any discussion? Hearing done, vote please, Deb.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. Agenda Item Number 18 is a change order for the library as well.
This change order is a credit of $474.06. The reason for the credit is we had originally some reading notes in there as part of the layout, decided to remove those, so the cost of materials was reviewed up for that, and then $54 of it, thanks to my note, could be small amount. The luxury vinyl tile that we're going to use in the gallery, switched the product specs from the one that was in the bid docs, so it's just swapping out one material for the other, there's a small cost difference, so.
Move to approve change order.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for this change order, we like the ones that involve a credit.
Yes.
Any discussion? Hearing done, vote please, Deb.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. Agenda Item Number 19 is a change order as well for the library.
As you discussed earlier, this is for the change order to replace the freight door in the northeast corner of the library that faces the railroad tracks, so total change order is $1,250.45, and that's broken down as approximately $576 for the door and hardware itself, and then $410 for Mason to fill in the space on the different door sides.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second from Tyler?
Me.
Rodney.
Oh, Rodney, I'm sorry, okay. Motion and a second then to approve this change order, any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. A little bit of echo evidently with these acrylic walls, so. Agenda Item Number 20 is a change order also pertaining to drywall with the library.
So this was an item that has, you know, just kind of got to construction, there's a number of items that need to be addressed, some of it just repairing, you know, what we didn't realize underneath was the condition that it was in, so some of this is doing spot repairs. Another item that we want to add is a rip joint around the support columns in the library, which provides some greater flexibility to prevent cracking, and then some expansion joints as well from where the existing drywall that we're able to preserve connects to the new drywall, just to help with any future cracking. And then it also includes basically a skin coat, a new finish on all those areas in red that you can see highlighted, some of them been extaffed that we took out because the public can't see them, but basically just providing that finish so the, hopefully it won't be able to tell where the old walls are and where the new walls begin. So the total amount of the change order for this work is $7,645. I will say, this is one that Laura and I have been back and forth quite a bit with Tyler, the project architect, on exactly what's needed and what the costs are, and we had some back and forth with the contractor, then, you know, ultimately, the rate for the work that we're going to be doing and the rate that they're charging is pretty fair, and so he and his whole staff recommends the approval of this change order.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for Item Number 20, this change order with the library, is there any discussion? Hearing done, vote please, Deb.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you.
I'm gonna just real quick, I shouldn't have been doing this all along, but it just came to me, as reference to the other change orders we just approved, we have it in, and so this is the classroom space on the south side, so this is where the window shade will be, and then the freight door is here, those are being replaced, and then what was the other? Oh, and then the gallery, that's where we're having the tile change on the entryway.
Okay, thank you, Jacob.
able to tell where the old walls are and where the new walls begin. So the total amount of the change order for this work is 7,645. I will say, this is one that Laura and I have been back and forth quite a bit with Tyler, the project architect, on exactly what's needed, what the costs are, and we had some back and forth with the contractor, then, you know, ultimately, the, Tyler, the rate for work that we're going to be doing, and the rate that they're charging is pretty fair, and so he, as well as staff, recommends approval of those change orders.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for item number 20, this change order with the library. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. Agenda item number 19 is a change order as well for the library.
As we discussed earlier, this is for the change order to replace the freight door in the northeast corner of the library that faces the railroad tracks, so total change order is 1,250.45, and that's broken down as approximately 576 dollars for the door and hardware itself, and then 410 dollars for Mason to fill in the space on the different door sides.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second from Tyler?
Me.
Rodney.
Oh, Rodney, I'm sorry, okay. Motion and a second then to approve this change order. Any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. Agenda item number 20 is a change order also pertaining to drywall with the library.
So this was an item as, you know, just kind of got to construction, there's a number of items that need to be addressed, some of it just repairing, you know, what we didn't realize underneath was the condition that it was in, so some of this is doing spot repairs. Another item that we want to add is a rip joint around the support columns in the library, which provides some greater flexibility to prevent cracking, and then some expansion joints as well from where the existing drywall that we're able to preserve connects to the new drywall again, just to help with any future cracking. And then it also includes basically a skin coat, a new finish on all those areas in red that you can see highlighted, some of them been exced that we took out because the public can't see them, but basically just providing that finish, so the, hopefully, we'll be able to tell where the old walls are and where the new walls begin. So the total amount of the change order for this work is 7,645. I will say, this is one that Laura and I have been back and forth quite a bit with Tyler, the project architect, on exactly what's needed, what the costs are, and we had some back and forth with the contractor, then, you know, ultimately, the, Tyler, the rate for work that we're going to be doing, and the rate that they're charging is pretty fair, and so he, as well as staff, recommends approval of those change orders.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for item number 20, this change order with the library. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. Agenda, oh.
I may just real quick, I shouldn't have been doing this all along, but it just came to me as reference to the other change order we just approved and how it fit in, so this is the classroom space on the south side, so this is where the window shade will be, and then the freight door is here, those are being replaced. And then what was the other? Oh, and then the gallery, that's where we're having the tile change on the entryway.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Jacob. Agenda item number 21 is a street closure request.
She's scared to talk, so if you've got anything.
That's all right. Kristen, it's your name on the request.
Good evening. I'm here at the building, don't know if you've ever been to the building. My first live event, meeting here, so we get to each other. We are on our block, we're so laments by us on State Street, so our block between Dodge and Thorington. On May 21st, we're going to have kind of a block party just to showcase the businesses on the block. We are bringing in as part of that a food truck, Big Asai, you know, if you guys are familiar with that, it's a, it's a big deal in the cities. I've never had one, my daughter says they're fantastic, it's like a smoothie bowl thing that they put fruit in, and it's kind of a big deal. They've agreed to come to Algonquin and bring their truck for that event, and we're planning on 2:00 PM to 6:00 PM on Friday, May 21st. We are hopeful that we can get that block between Dodge and Thorington completely blocked off, so that we could have all the businesses showcased outside, where people can feel comfortable in this world we live in, to roam around and check out each business and what each has to offer. I think it'd be great for the whole, we've already had a lot of positive feedback about that truck coming in from outlying communities, people as far as Clear Lake and Mason City that want to come over for that. So I think it'd be good for the whole downtown, just to kind of showcase our, our State Street businesses, which is sitting up for a small town, we all know it's, it's very vibrant, and I think it'd be good for the whole, the whole town. If, and I don't know about city codes, I'm not versed on whether we can do this or not between 2:00 and 6:00 PM, if it's not possible, could we at least get maybe four or five parking spots on each side of the road, so that we can park the truck and have some things outdoors for people to come and, and enjoy.
Well, I always like a party, so that'd be a reason why we can't block a block off.
I think it'd be a lot of fun for the entire town, and we'd love to make it a manual event and showcase outdoor and, and what we have to offer, our businesses, I think not only our block, I think it'd help to block the businesses up the street as well, because people have to park and walk by those businesses as well, so I think it'd be good for everyone.
One thing, David Kendall, if you want to jump into terms of logistics of, you know, closing the street midday, maybe sure vehicles are out there, you know, if I'm founders day, that's a city sponsored event, so, you know, we take care of that, but you know, the private event, in terms of managing that traffic, David Kendall, if you have any thoughts on that?
I got a few questions, yeah, Dr. Pedolin. As far as blocking out the street, I think that's, that in itself is pretty manageable. Getting cars out of there could be more difficult, because, I mean, obviously, you'd work with merchants, but they've also got customers and other people that come in, so there'll be a little bit of challenge to that. You know, putting up tent signs, barricades, all of that should be fairly simple. Now, as far as, now, you, you mentioned a food truck, if the street was blocked off totally with barricades, where would you look to put that, on that block?
I would think probably right in front of our business there on the corner, and if we, if we could just block off even Dodge Street, that would give any, any patrons of any of those businesses that are already there a way out, you know, if you don't block the Thorington, exit for them, so that any traffic coming down State Street is blocked between those hours, but any of those people that are already in businesses can still have a way out for the street following their traffic on out through Thorington Street there.
Right, yeah, leaving out, because, you know, you put some barricades there for that, those drivers that drive up the wrong way every, every day, also leaving out for, for the folks to get out of there, because once you put barricades out, there's going to be some, some cars so parked there. Would there be anything as far as a stage or anything like that?
I don't think so. If we did any, we're planning on some live music, but we can put them off to the side and not be on the main part of the street for that.
Okay. Then what, would there be an element there as far as the bars and alcohol and things like that, because that's a whole other series of things that needs to be done?
Well, I know Pepsi and Billy Joe's are both involved, they would love to be able to serve alcohol, I'm sure, so I don't know, that's a different animal, as you say, I don't know what has to be in the world for people that, you know, for the drinking, Pepsi will walk across the street and look at what Bloom has to offer, you know, if that block is closed, if that's legal, not legal, I don't know, but, I mean, ideally, that'd be great, because then everybody can enjoy the evening on the block there and roam around and not get in trouble if they have a beer in their hand.
Yeah, and that has to do with outdoor drinking areas, as you know, and the 2:00 to 6:00 AM, or 2:00, 6:00 AM, so you use the 2:00 to 6:00 AM because the department up there, the 2:00 PM to 6:00 PM, for the most part, does not cause problems for the police department, because I'm thinking of as we get later in the day, as far as drinking, as we get closer to 2:00, obviously, the mentality changes, that wouldn't be a problem here, and we also don't have the cover of darkness, so that's good. The, I guess, do we want to require some sort of police presence, and that would be an additional issue, might not be a bad idea. And then the only other thing, and Dr. Pedolin's been clear, that he's looking 2:00 PM to 6:00 PM, the things come in my mind is somebody will get the idea beyond Dr. Pedolin that says, how can, can we expand this out and from 2:00, 6:00 PM to 2:00 AM and really make it a great event? Now I've got an issue with that, because, you know, we've got some staffing and a whole other other things, so basically, what he's proposing or what they are proposing, father or daughter, we're not, as a police department, opposed to that whatsoever.
Yeah, I would think that we could approve the street closing and your concept there, but as far as the alcohol, I would expect that the two bar owners there would have to get together and come to us and say if they wanted to do anything. I mean, I would think 2:00 to 6:00 would be really...
They'd have to approve the expansion of their sharing.
I think that'd be bad timing for them anyways, so.
Yeah, that's on them, they'd have to expand their service area and that's to come through, but, I mean, right now, Pepsi still has theirs out, they have that out.
I said outdoor.
Yeah, Billy Joe's does not, they just have that back deck.
Yep.
Okay, I'll let him know.
Yep. I spoke to Doug a little bit, what driving you up there is.
You're fine.
I, well, when I spoke to Doug, he was saying that if anything, he would just, he didn't really know, he said it's really a gray area, Atlantic State and the city, all that stuff. I didn't really understand it all, because it's not my territory, but he was just mostly talking about maybe just expanding his outdoor little space a little bit and coming to you with that, he just didn't know what he would be talking about.
Yeah, yeah.
And Billy Joe's, I'm not sure they were going to do anything outside, but mostly maybe do some big thing inside and just have people walk in and leave, you know, have it, you know, I don't know about that, so, he didn't want to talk about that.
I think their biggest participation would start about the time yours got over.
We shake the barricades down.
Yes.
Well, thank you for considering.
I have one question, Clark, and the other communities where I've worked, inevitably, if you want to block off a portion of the street on a Friday afternoon, have you talked to all of the businesses in that block?
Aside from the paint store, yes, but we can't.
I, I think just being a good neighbor would be a good idea, because inevitably, City Hall gets the calls, well, I, I didn't know they were blocking our street off, and I don't have parking, and just...
As we sat back there this evening, we asked, we kind of asked Kristen to just talk to the paint store, she's just, you know, eyes got made, no, I forgot, but we will, for sure.
That is, oh, that is Friday, yeah, just was looking at what that date was, for sure.
So there, is there any other concerns, are there any other concerns, Jacob, or Kendall?
Alcohol, that'd be taken care of, so except for, you know, as long as PD in terms of getting things out, and what, and that might go, then there'd be a little part there after 2:00, you know, they're comfortable with it, I'm comfortable with it.
Okay, Kendall's right behind you there, Deb.
Yeah. Yeah, I got some concerns about this conversation as far as the outdoor liquor. I don't want this to be a situation where, well, we got this outdoor drinking area, but we know, we really reasonably know that our patrons aren't going to stay in it, they're going to go beyond that, and we're going to keep our fingers crossed that nothing is going to be done from an enforcement standpoint, that that has a problem. I think it should be the, the normal, the normal procedure in having an expanded outdoor drinking area, because I don't think anything else is going to work, I don't think anything else is going to be legal, as far as the laws being abided by.
Yeah. Yeah, we're not, we don't want this to be a liquor fest, I mean, we just, we just want to showcase the businesses, normally, you know, it's going to be these yogurt smoothies and, and just, we'll have, you know, some tables out there, some of our machines showing what we can do, and Bloom's going to have some things out there, so I don't think it's going to get very lit. Yeah, and, I mean, right now, all we're talking about is the street closure, so if the bars want to come to us, that's a whole different situation, so. Yeah, we can do that. Yeah. Thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
I would move to approve the street closure for May 21st from 2:00 to 6:00.
Second. We have a motion from Mike, a second from Harley, any other discussion? Hearing none, vote please, Deb.
Jody?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. And agenda item number 22 involves the Teas Park Shelter House Final Design.
All right.
Thank you.
Here we are again.
Here we are again.
I think we know where, where the others are, if you're having...
Well, one thing that, I guess during the break, I was talking with some others here, my main concern is not to date it too much, you know, I think actually the slanted roofs